Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for coming. I call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, November 8, 2023, to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence for whatever it is you'd like to think about. Thank you. If you'd all please stand and join Alderman Dunn in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll for this evening. Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor. Thank you, sir. So again, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming as we begin the meeting of the City Council. Again, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. Respectfully, we welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're certainly happy you're participating in your city government, but as to your participation, please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place, especially for the folks in here. If you'd just be kind enough to put your cellphone on silent or turn it off, simply it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, order, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as a body and not address anybody, staff, and us, as in any individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please don't disrupt the meeting. We want to hear from everybody, so please show respect for the folks talking. This is your warning for any disruptions. Thank you. Will an alderman move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for October 25?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. City Administrator Spiegel, anything tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. Will an alderman move approval of the report of the Committee of the Hall for November 1, 2023?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any op— I apologize. Any opposed? Very good. We have one presentation this evening. Halloween parade information. So Halloween parade kicked off at 2:00 in Pershing. It was at 2:00 p.m. on Sunday. Eleven blocks of parade route, wide variety of parade entries this year, including small businesses, local nonprofits, and school-based organizations and city departments. Five members of staff and four additional volunteers served as parade coordinators and lead volunteers, and I thank you very much for all of that. Staff resources, Davenport Police Department, Davenport Public Works, Davenport Parks and Rec, all assisted in this parade. Parade volunteers, city staff, again, elected officials, North High School Athletic Boosters Club, we appreciate your attendance, and of course, many Davenport citizens. So I'll meet— Who am I meeting? At the podium to present a few trophies. Ally, I think. Sorry. I saw you.
Okay, we have best youth entry this year was Chill on Wheels by Manny.
Woo! Give my hand. You got anybody else on in the picture?
No.
Congratulations.[246.01][246.01](applause)
Best dance group, Major Vengeance Dance Company. Woo![255.23][255.23](applause) Yeah. One second. It makes it—
Good job.[275.81][275.81](applause)
And best overall entry this year was Coons Nissan of Davenport.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. One second. It makes it— And best overall entry this year was Coons Nissan of Davenport.
Thank you, sir.
Hi.
Yep, you won.
Come on!
Okay.
And we'll pause a moment if any folks want to leave. Thank you for your participation this year. Okay, good. Thank you. And let's all give Ally and the city staff and some of those folks a round of applause.[372.31][372.31](applause) Okay, we'll move on to petitions, communications. Any council folks? I see—let's see. Alderwoman McGinnis.
I hope I don't get this wrong. I believe the City of Davenport is closed on Friday, November 10, for Veterans Day, and the parade is on Saturday, and I'm sure Mayor Mattson will probably want to talk about that, but we will be closed on Friday.
Thank you. You're good. All right? Anybody else? Very good. Okay, we'll move to individual approval items on the discussion agenda. The first item is a second consideration of ordinance for case REZ 23-05, being the request of Anthony Properties to rezone 10.17 acres of Lot 1, a Phoenix Center 6th Edition in the 5600 block of Tremont, from light industrial to multifamily. Planning and zoning recommends denial. Eight votes required for passage for council. Is there any public with comment? Very good. Will an alderman please move second consideration?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from alder folks? I see Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, we've been working with staff, the developer, Alderman Gripp, to work up some of the conditions we talked about last week. We'll have them available for next week as they go through legal and other review. So I would request that we be able to move this forward to discussion for next week.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Lee. Anyone else? Very good. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll on second consideration. Condon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. It moves to second—third consideration. Next item is a resolution approving case F23-14, being the request of E&amp;A Enterprises for a final plat of 56 enclave, a two-lot subdivision on 9.57 acres located north of East 56th Street and Lakeview Parkway. Is there any public with comment? Very good. Will an alderman move the resolution?
So moved.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? Very good. Brian, please call the roll. Mr. Crupp, sorry. Ortiz?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. The resolution is adopted. Next one, number three. Motion approving the local objectives for the community development block grant for year 50 annual action plan. Is there any public with comment? Okay, will an alderman move the motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Any alder folks discussion? Brian, Mr. Crupp, please call the roll. Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
And Kelly?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. Motion passes. Last item on discussion is a motion approving a beer and liquor license application. New license, new owner, temporary permit, outdoor location in Ward 3, Last Picture House, 325 East 2nd Street. New license, license type C, pending fire department review. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will alderperson move the motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion from alder folks? I see Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. Would it be possible to—Alderman Dunn asked a bunch of questions last week. He had like four or five. Would it be possible to find out what the answers were to those?
So the answers were provided in writing to the council, and Alderman Dunn has been in this week and said that the answers provided were sufficient for the questions he asked.
Okay. Okay. And also, I just want to talk a little bit about what the policy is for when we paint brick and when we don't paint brick. Could someone from staff help me with that?
It's not part of this discussion. Thank—okay, good. Anything else? All right, very good. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you. I just want to thank staff for putting all that together for me and getting it to me in a timely manner. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
And Jobchin?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. That pass—motion passes. The next item is their approval for all items on the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second to move consent. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll. Gripp?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Jobchin?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. That passes. Next area is other ordinances, resolutions, motions. We have one. First, is there a motion for suspension of the rules to add this so we can vote on it? There's a motion?
Second.
And a second, okay? Let's see. Brian, Mr. Crupp, please call the roll for suspension. Need eight. Jobchin?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. The rules are suspended, so now I'll read the resolution. It's granting an encroachment license to Cinema Paradiso to locate a fire escape in the right-of-way on the sidewalk along Iowa Street abutting 325 East 2nd. Is there any public with comment? Will an alderman move the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from alder folks? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. I just want to say this has been one of my concerns with this, to make sure that we have appropriate public escape from the roof for this thing. So normally, I don't like the suspension of the rules, but this one is very important. So I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Anyone else? Very good. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll. Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
And Condon?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. The resolution is adopted and passes. Okay, next area is there are they public with business? If there are, please come to the podium. If the next person—if there's someone else who wants to speak, pick a podium, stand by it so I know there's someone else. Please remember decorum and let the person talk and not—please name, order, address. You have five minutes.
My name is Gary Ekland, and I live in Davenport, Iowa. I want to again ask that the United States Attorney General investigate the City of Davenport. I have come to believe that there is essentially a white supremacist conspiracy in plain sight involving multiple members of the elected and unelected government.
Okay, Mr. Ekland, you've— Yep, Mr. Ekland, so you've said this multiple weeks, multiple months. I'm done with that, so make your point about what you want, but I'm done with you saying white supremacy and accusing either elected or staff of any of that, so make your point.
I'm asking for an investigation. Why do they hate us? They hate us because they hate us. Do you understand? No, I do not understand. Okay, let me explain it better. They hate us with an intense passion. They hate us with an intense passion no one can really explain. They want to destroy all of our food and all of our flowers and even the milkweed for the monarch butterflies. They want to destroy all of our artwork, our paints, our brushes, our religion and religious art. They believe we are inferior and subhuman, and they want even to destroy all of our clothes. They want us homeless and hungry and hitchhiking to Oklahoma where they think we belong. They say 0.25% is too many. They believe the Indian Removal Act of 1830 did not go far enough. They truly believe they are superior and we are inferior. Now do you understand? No, I do not. I do not understand a hatred so deep they destroy all of our food and flowers and milkweed and clothes and art and drive us from our land. I just do not understand at all. Maybe I never will.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Adrian Jones, and I thank you guys for this opportunity to come and talk to you. I'm actually a deputy for Scott County Sheriff's Department. So I see a couple familiar faces here. I love serving my community. I love making the county of Scott better. I also have a second hat I wear. I'm actually a pastor for a church on the corner of Fourth and Pine. It's a smaller ministry. And I'm here today because of an issue with our building. I'm coming to ask for help because I am the pastor-owner of the building. It's 2202 West Fourth Street. There is a crack in the east side of the building, east side of the wall of the building. I'm sure some of us have probably seen the news article, which unfortunately, this issue has caused our congregation, you know, to be—to vacate the building. And so, a rough estimate of what I believe the cost may be to restore this building is maybe north of $200,000, $250,000. I'm not asking for money today. I'm not asking for money. But what I am asking for is the tools to help rectify the situation. I believe the church was built in 1902 by a small German congregation. It's actually listed on the Davenport—Davenport Registry of Historical Landmarks. It's number 28, that property. I am seeking help because I want to fulfill the purpose of why that building, I believe, was even erected in the first place. Again, that building was small, didn't have a parking lot, but I believe the reason why is because it was designed to affect that community. And I believe that when they built that church, they had a vision to impact that neighborhood. And I believe we can—we can change our nation. And I believe we can change our nation, but before we change our nation, we have to change our states. And before we can change our states, we have to impact our counties and cities. And before we can impact our counties and cities, we have to impact our communities. And before we impact our communities, we have to impact our neighborhoods. And so, I've been in possession of that building since 2014, and the changes I've seen so far in that area for what we've done—I'm not trying to boast, but I'm just saying that I believe that we can make a difference in that community. I've seen people, you know, get off of drugs. I've seen people, you know, who are battling with alcoholism. That's our mission. That's our goal. I'm not here to promote a church or denomination or anything like that. I'm just here to promote people that have a mission to impact that community. I believe that we can make Davenport, even the southwest end, better. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I will leave you with this. I believe that being prideful is not the best character attributes possessed. I believe that being honorable is greater than being prideful. I believe that pride is a sense of selfishness, hence the term we take, pride. And I believe that honor is given. So with that being said, I know that—I'm coming to you in my humble form. I know that this task, something that I cannot accomplish on my own, so I'm seeking help to, again, restore this property because the situation, I believe honestly myself, is a little bit bigger than I can handle. Once again, I—it'll be my honor to work with you in any way, shape, or form to—to fix this problem, so again, I thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Toni Bear, owner of Toni's Smoking Grill, founder of Creative Women of Color. I do business over here. I live over on the other side of the river. There have been a couple things that have happened as far as injustices lately on that side and this side of the river, and it's caused me to make a page called Misguided Souls. And so, I've been kind of watching a lot of what's going on around the Quad Cities, and I kind of wanted to just come and introduce myself and to say that I'm paying attention a lot more to what's going on. We're in 2023, and there's still a lot of things that have going on that my great-grandparents and their parents dealt with, that now I'm facing and other people are facing, and it goes on and on and on. So I guess I'm just here to introduce myself and congratulate all that are staying and all that are coming on board, but I'm going to be kind of watching to make sure that these injustices kind of stop. It's 2023, and we all need to be treated fairly and equally, business owners, businesswomen, businessmen of all color and races. And I'm not from here, this side of the river, that side of the river, anywhere in the Quad Cities. So I feel like a lot of times when some injustices happen, people are afraid to say things because they might lose a relationship or they might know somebody that it may affect their relationship. I don't have anything to lose here. I'm not from here, and I'm not afraid to speak up. So with that being said, if I see any injustices going on, you guys are going to see a lot more of me. And I have people that are not from here as well that will make it very loud if injustices continue to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Janeite Dux, and I live at 2111 East Lombard Street, and I'm happily represented by—or happy with my alderman that represents me in the 5th Ward. I want to say congratulations sincerely to those who won yesterday and regrets to those that were losing and moving on with their life. It's recently—I've been—I recently was able to read the PDF police report regarding one of our fine, not-so-fine representatives on the Davenport City Council. And my friend Andrea Moore was brave enough to tell her story of what happened to her when she was 15 years old.
Okay, Ms. Dux, we're not—this is an admission, you're not—you're not going to allow you.
Okay, as a taxpayer, I would like to ask the City Council to please stop slow-walking the investigation into the use of the N-word by this person, and I would like the City Council to pull the police report, and this person needs to be—I don't want my tax dollars paying another penny of his salary, even though he lost the election last night. I don't want my tax dollars paying for this person to represent my city. And, you know, these allegations are factual. There's enough credible evidence. She, out of the kindness of her heart, didn't want the children that she babysat to be fatherless. The statute of limitations law that was just changed in 2021 so that sexual abuse and harassment of minors, there was no longer a statute of limitations on it. There's enough credible evidence that that man should no longer be not listed as a child predator and on the sexual abuse registry list.
Thank you, Ms. Dux.
Is my five minutes up?
No, but if you're going to stay on this—
Then one last thing I'd like to talk about, please, is—
If it's something different.
It's not, it's a different topic. The abuse of low-income and homeless folks in our town by drug dealers. And they're exploiting these folks at the places that they frequent, you know, St. Anthony's, the center, the Carol Center, you know, outside as opposed to inside necessarily. And, you know, many of them come with paychecks, social security checks, or veterans pay, or, you know, little jobs that they do, whatever. And unfortunately, because of our addiction problem and not enough money being thrown to, you know, overcoming, you know, addictions, they're exploiting addicted homeless and low-income folks in town by, you know, here, here's some crack or meth or whatever it is, and you can pay me when you get your social security check on the first of the month. But if you don't pay me $40 tomorrow, then it's going to be $80 in two days. And it's a vicious cycle that is happening for these homeless vets, homeless seniors that also have addiction issues. And I know this firsthand because of a, you know, somebody that I care about deeply that unfortunately is an addict and living on his meager social security check. You know, so more money needs to be thrown into rehabilitation programs and services. We can't, you know, arrest our way out of a drug addiction problem, you know? And I've spoken to the council many times before about my son, you know, who had a, you know, owed a drug dealer $1,000 and, you know, ended up pulling robberies instead of as a 15-year-old coming to me or coming to the trusted people in his life. And now, as a 23-year-old, he's still in prison, you know? I've come and talked before about juvenile justice issues and the moratorium that was put on, what is it now, Mike, 13 years or so ago, about any more youth residential programs in town, you know, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. And sincerely, congratulations to you for winning yesterday.
Thank you. Next, please.
Ron Swiner. Davenport Rock Island. I'd like to thank you all for what you've done, the ones that move on. My hopes are, with the new council, we have many challenges ahead as a city. It's not going to be cheap. It's going to be long and tenuous, but it doesn't change the fact that we, as citizens, still are asking for answers. Like I spoke last week, justice has many meanings, but the truth is, there is no justice. Free bargains, deals, change things. We have three dead, one crippled for life. It's a sad stain on this city, which is going to cost millions and millions. I'm afraid the ones that are staying, you have a big job ahead of you. My hopes and my true hopes are that this council and future councils address the issues in regards to rentals, what it's going to take to make people safe, so we don't have another 324 Main Street. A very prominent and historic part of the city is gone, and I don't mean the building. I mean 3— I mean three people that were part of this community. Yes, it's a shame the building's gone. To shame what happened. Accountability is gonna be long and hard in this aspect. And I will be here with many others, keep asking and asking and asking. Please give us something. I understand that litigation, depositions, and other things are gonna take a long time. But I think three families deserve an answer. I have pondered many times before this council, spoke many times with my heart because I was raised in this community to try and make it a little better. And that's what I try and do week after week. I know some of you get sick of hearing me, but you know what? I'm allowed. This is my voice. I try very hard not to cross the line. I've been asked a couple times, hey, hey, you know, and I change. But you know what? My hopes and my heart believes that this city can do better. I pray to God with a different counsel at, at odds, it will do better because this is, for now, my home. My family's buried here. My family has history here. Great-great-grandfather, grandfathers, the stores they ran, the history we've created. I've done forty-five years in scouting here. I've tried to make this community a little better. And I hope I can continue to do that. But we'll see what happens over the next few months. Hopefully, we can get something done where the new council gets here in order to make Davenport a better place. I know we don't have rights to shut people down, but that have rentals, but we can make them surely accountable. That's all I'm asking. That's all we're asking. You know? I know the stares I get, the people ignoring me, I don't care. My voice carries not only the community, but I get stopped, people talk to me. People say, hey, why do you keep doing that? You can't fight City Hall. It's not about fighting City Hall. It's about making Davenport a little better, period. It's not about fighting. It's not about arguing. It's about trying to make it better. And that's why I come here. I've spent many meetings down here. And I will continue.
Thank you, sir.
And I thank you very much for your time and good luck to all of you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is LaShawn Dixon. I'm in the fifth ward and I guess I'll be going to seven. I don't know which one I belong to right now, but either way, I'll be happy with either one. I'm happy. I want to start off by saying congratulations. Sad we're losing one. I want to thank you for all your dedication and service. And Davenport has a lot of more work to do, a lot. What really got me up here to speak tonight, I've had, seen the police report. And I know you probably don't want to hear it and I'll probably get porter ordered. But there is no way, humanly possible, that someone sitting on this, on this board, yeah, you gonna lean up to the mic, them porter orders are getting louder and them guesses are getting louder too. I'm, I know you're proud, but calm down. The contributing liquor to a man that is terrible and it should have never happened. And that person sits on this board knowing that they have done something absolutely terrible.
Ma'am.
Liquor.
Please change your subject.
And I'm gonna, and one more thing, you let the person on board when they hit, they, they touched a child. Is that enough?
Don't say that.
He
Please change your subject.
A child.
Okay, you're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
He needs to be removed.
You know, I had a whole plan about what I was gonna come up here and say. After I woke up to use the restroom last night, looked at the, the results, I went back to the bathroom and puked. Davenport could have done way better. But the only thing I can say for you guys is, would it be fair for any one of you guys to have to wait one hundred and sixty-four days to find out what truly happened to your family members? Would you want that? I don't think so. Just the closure alone, yeah, they, they've been able to bury their loved ones, say their goodbyes and so forth. But it's not closure. It's not justice. We were served with a little bit of justice last night. And that's kind of what's been making me be okay with the results last night. But at the same time, as we had a alderman remove for using honey, babe, sweetie, now the city of Davenport citizens are calling for immediate action. And that's all I'm gonna say, as you guys all know what I'm talking about.
Thank you. Next, please.
Katie from Davenport. They're missed, they're, they're letting go a good one. They're lost. Thank you for all that you've done. Since I can't talk about the situation, let me take you down a memory lane of a real story. Some of you may have daughters. Been a daughter. Would you want your daughters to have something happen to them? I was raped at thirteen. Thirteen. I got justice for mine. Thank God, because of neighbors. But at eighteen, I had it happen to me again. I didn't get justice for that one. So I cannot imagine if I were to go wake up one morning and see names plastered everywhere. Could not. This last two weeks, I've just been thinking like, if I saw his name, would I be okay? No. What some people do, the young people affects people for the rest of their life. And I can't for the life of me why people can just be okay with just allowing that to happen. I would rather be called babe and honey and sweetie any other day than have somebody touch me in an inappropriate way. It, it sickens me, the fact that it's still occurring in twenty twenty, you know, what, what's the big thing? We're not in nineteen fifty-two anymore. We're in twenty twenty-three. That's the thing, we're still in twenty twenty-three then. Where's the justice? When does it begin? If you, if you had a daughter, would you be just sent silently allowing it? Probably not. You hurt a girl, a young girl, and it affects her. It affects me and I'm forty-two and I have kids of my own. And God forbid something like this ever happened to my daughter and not get justice. No way in hell. Change is still coming because we've got another two years and boots are on the ground.
Thank you. Any, next, please.
David Anderson, Ward Five. I wish I could give it a hero's award to the gentleman out in the lobby earlier who helped our friend over here with one of the problems he was having. And I didn't bring an award, but I would just like to say thank you. What a good guy. Super fantastic, happy, wonderful. It's just, and my favorite police officer checked my bag. I brought in a towel in case anybody looked wet because it was raining like cats and dogs earlier. And when I was working for the government, they, when they first came out with the check all bags policy and made us sit for an hour, I actually did that at work. I was called in the office and says, why did you do that? And I'm like, I, I guess I don't fit in here at work, but thank you for the good people. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Dale Gilmore and I live in the sixth ward. I've got a lot to cover, so let's go. I was at a ward meeting, and, and I'm saying this in a positive, I believe it was an eighth ward meeting where there was somebody there from the recycle center. And I, if, if I'm not correct, please, somebody correct this. But I would like to, the election's over. I'll not comment on the outcome, but I would like to remind all the candidates that according to what I remember, the corrugated signs do not recycle, do not put them in the recycle bin. The metal stands may be recycled. Let's change subjects. I'd like to touch briefly on three-twenty-four Main Street. What happened there was tragic, to say the least. I truly have sympathy for all whose lives have been affected and especially those families of the three deceased men. Point one, so let's take a closer look at what happened. A portion of the west wall collapsed. According to a team of forensic structural engineers, their report lists on, incomplete on the city's website, it's a hundred and fourteen pages and it's, it's available entirely on, on the city's website. The report includes photographs, videos, eyewitness accounts of the collapse. The report states, and I will quote, "Removing sections of brick from the western wall without adequately stabilizing it with shoring caused the wall to collapse. Had a proper shoring and construction plan been implemented, implemented during these repairs, the building would not have collapsed." Number two, why hasn't Andrew Wold been arrested? Answer, neither the city council, the mayor, or the city attorney have the authority to arrest Andrew Wold. The authority rests solely on the county attorney. Ask the county attorney that question. Point number three, Andrew Wold was delinquent in paying his rental license fees. Now, for the sake of, of argument, I'll accept what you say is true. The city of Davenport lists issues hundreds of rental licenses for both commercial and residential properties. I can assure you that out of the hundreds of rental licenses, Andrew Wold was not the sole delinquent license holder. I don't know for a fact, but I bet at least dozens of license holders are delinquent. Number four, the city was accused of wanting to demolish the building immediately. Let me give you some facts. A, the building was unstable and imminent collapse was quite possible. B, you don't just tear down an old asbestos-filled building. You first need a permit from the EPA, which could, could take a few days and probably require you to hydrate or wet down the building during demolition to reduce the amount of asbestos in the air. C, now you have water runoff that contains asbestos. You need a DNR permit, which could take another couple of days and requires extensive monitoring of the runoff. So you see, even if the city had wanted to tear down that building immediately, they couldn't have. So let's change the subject. Saturday is Veterans Day. Thank you to all the veterans. And I, you know, I, I, I was drafted, but I never actually served. So, you know, that doesn't make me a veteran, but I know that, I know that Your Honor is a, a well-decorated veteran. And thank you to all the veterans. Remember a veteran on, on, on Veterans Day. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Look how I did to the fifth ward. Tonight, I just wanted to come here and tell you, I don't think anyone said anything wrong about bringing up the police report about someone who's sitting on the podium. So I really do feel like you're taking away people's first admitted rights again. So I know you just won last night, so your head is probably a little big, but you can listen to what the community concerns are. Because I agree, our tax dollars should not pay someone who's committed a crime or harm someone that represents a community. You're welcome. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anything else, city mister? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion second, all in favor to adjourn. Have a good weekend. Happy Veterans Day.